All right, we're calling the Selectmen's Meeting to Order on Monday, February 26, First item is an update of the Tuesday, February 20 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a Selectmen's expenses. These are three months of $10 cell phone reimbursements for our administrator and a reimbursement of the payment of $7.80 for the mailing for the ABCC application for Regal Cinemas for a total of $37.80.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All right. Hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll sign the second sheet of this, and I need at least two people to sign.
Can we just sign in the second?
No, no. Just the first, yep.
Okay.
And we're good with that. Unless you want us to put your autograph under this as well?
Really?
Don't feel left out. Go ahead.
I sign all the other stuff.
We want to keep you in practice. All right. The next is a letter to Amica Insurance denying a claim for property damage due to plowing on, I think it was Woodard Avenue, if I remember correctly, right?
Yes.
On Woodard Avenue. The claim was made by the proponent to their insurance company. No claim was made directly to the town, and we have no evidence or anything credible asserting that the town caused it, so the letter is to that effect. Motion to issue the letter?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the Board of Selectmen's Annual Report. Do people have a chance? I know I sent it out quite late.
Yeah. I just sent Mary a couple of things, and she already addressed them, so.
Okay. The one thing I hope doesn't get changed back is that there were changes of "its" to "its," and the possessive of "its" is "ITS" and not "IT apostrophe S." So I made that change.
Yeah, I don't think that was changed, one of the changes Lisa made.
Okay.
There were some changes, though, that were suggested that I made, though, when it said "the board."
Yes, I, well, yes, I should indicate that in...
I didn't touch the "it" stuff again, though.
Yeah, yeah. No. And, yes, and if there were a couple of changes that were required in that regard, that's fine. I...
What I asked her to change was just, it started with "in June," two paragraphs in a row, so she just thought skip that.
That's fine. Whatever.
And then I had her put the other stuff in a table so that it put more stuff for margins.
Okay. That's fine.
And also fix Lisa's spelling of the name.
Oh, yes, we have a...
You called me L.I.S.
Liz. Liza.
Yeah. Did I do "L.I.s"?
No, no, you didn't do it.
You just did "L.I.s."
I'm not sure how you got it dropped off.
Oh, sorry.
I'm not sure how.
Okay. Yes, and basically, it occurred to me that we should probably be using the more gender-neutral term, "the board," through that rather than "the selectmen," so I made that change.
Awesome. Thank you.
In addition to that, I added the third paragraph, which just very broadly talks about the fact that we're continuing to work on the project of restructuring the combined fire rescue department to provide dependable 24/7 coverage and to maintain the context of the department that retains a strong volunteer component.
That I changed, but I'll put it back.
And then...
I didn't keep doing that.
I added language, which has subsequently been slightly amended, indicating the work that was done with Berlin Home Day. We discussed that I would do that before. And thank you, Mary, for resending that. As soon as you resented, I went back over the things, and I saw the email that it was in, but I'm still... I did, I did learn, I did learn labels over the last week, and next week...
It's awesome, isn't it?
Labels are fine. I mean, labels are what I'm used to, is folders, you know, and if I can do that, then...
Was that in the email you sent?
Yeah. I sent something about labels and something about...
I saved it, but I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Unthreading, if you want to unthread.
Yeah, yeah. I have to watch the unthreading YouTube, but it helps a great deal that when I read something, I can at least put it in a particular, you know, folder, and then the threading isn't so much of a problem because I'm looking at, you know, three or four or five emails rather than trying to sort it out from, from the main list. So that was very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Just let me know if you've got anything else.
No, that's fine. And I will also sort of give an update on the Energy Committee letter that I'm due.
Okay.
Every time I have a moment to look at that, I can't find it, but I did spend some time this afternoon. I found it, and I put it in a new Energy Committee file, so it will be there. And the next time, which it should be before the end of the week that I have some time to do that letter, I will do it.
Okay, because you got another email from them today. Suddenly, they are very...
Yeah, well...
Yeah.
Yeah. We still have some money, so that's, that was good to catch it.
Okay.
So anyway, if people are comfortable with that report, do you want to vote to finalize that report?
We can. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any further comments or questions?
No.
All right. Hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I did send the stuff to Richard. I did offer to him that I was going to be working in Burl on Wednesday. If he wanted to talk about anything, I would be available to do that. I don't know whether I will or not. I think we're settled on that issue, but I haven't had a chance to sort of look at those budgets and see if I actually had any questions on the revised budget that were...
The collector and the tech and the treasurer?
And so I would like to defer this to next Monday, but I think next Monday, we will definitely put it on the agenda.
Okay.
And I think we should put it on the agenda as a separate item, which is the approval of the treasurer tax collector budget and, and talk about it, because I think we've, at this point, settled the issues. I'll, I'll talk to Richard on Wednesday if we need to, but I, I didn't have time to actually look through it to say, okay, you know, does this, do these figures make sense? I don't know if anybody else has done that.
Yeah. Well, I sat with him, and he sort of explained. It's, it's not, it's basically, I think, $8,000 more on his. Kate had already had her increase.
It's $8,000 more on his, and then does the other separate item completely go away?
The, which one?
The collector, then budget completely goes away?
Well, I think there are two there. He hadn't actually combined them as one.
Right.
I think maybe so you could see that they were split out, but I mean, theoretically, they should be one at this point. Yeah, and it's reduced.
It's reduced quite a bit.
Okay.
The tax collector.
Okay. If you don't mind your patience, I'd like to take a look at that over the next week, and we will definitely put it as a red line on the agenda for next week to...
Okay.
...approve or not. And I'll, I'll see if I can talk to Dennis, too, on Wednesday when I'm around. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
Is that the last budget that we have to look at?
I think it is.
No, the Shoville Valley Regional...
Oh, that's right.
Communication.
Yes.
And I have a meeting on Wednesday, which hopefully will have more information.
Okay. And then insurance.
Yep. She's supposed to be coming Tuesday or Wednesday, so...
Okay.
I don't know if a selectman wants to be there or if you just want me to do it like I had before.
Tuesday or Wednesday?
She hadn't committed yet, so we wouldn't really know, but tomorrow, because she hadn't sent another email to saying which day she's...
Strikes me as though it might be a Wednesday tomorrow. If she is coming on Wednesday and you find out tomorrow, let me know, because maybe I can coordinate being down here to talk to her. Otherwise, you know, you can talk to her and report, fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay. So those are the three that we have outstanding, correct?
Right.
Let me jump ahead and deal with the Mass DEP letter regarding the library water and septic. I sent that around today.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if there were any questions. I mean, we have talked about this from time to time, and I certainly gave people, you know, a 10,000-foot description of my concerns, which were mostly scheduling and a couple of substantive concerns, but not really too many, and that letter reflects those.
Right.
Any questions on that?
No.
Okay.
No?
And we'll, and again, you know, Marielle was looking for those by Friday, but we had a meeting on October 13, and she sent them to us on January 31, so I'm reasonably certain of the fact that she would get, you know, a robust response that suggests that the town is, you know, serious about it, but is, you know, trying to deal with it in a way that we're not going to get ourselves into a situation where we're immediately violating it, that she'll be okay with that. So if that's okay, we'll issue that letter, and I will report to you as she responds to it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, this is a situation that has been persisting for a long time.
Mm-hmm.
And I would just point out that the state could come in and close down the library any damn time they wanted, you know, whether we do extra work on it or not, given, you know, what we're providing there. And it's really sort of, to me, it's really sort of bad form for the town to be in violation of a public water supply regulation. This gives us an opportunity to bring ourselves into compliance, and the consent order creates a situation where it also binds the Commonwealth. So we have to do certain things, but if we do those certain things, then the Commonwealth can't come in and pull the rug out from underneath us. So that's the benefit for us of going forward. There will be continuing expenses to that, and anybody who reads that understands that. But it's a public water supply. I mean, we can't, you know...
Yeah.
We really can't continue, whether we do further work on the library or not, it just seems to me we really can't continue turning a blind eye to that, you know, so that's...
And I think you want to invite more people into the library, and it would, isn't there a number where you have to consider?
No, no, we are, we're already over it. I mean, it doesn't matter.
We're well over it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's the...
No, we're already a public water supply. That's, that's the problem.
Right.
We're a non-regulated, which translates to illegal, public water supply there already.
Okay.
I did raise, and if you look at the letter, the fact that they had cited in the consent order 200 gallon-a-day limit, and that is one of the things I want to discuss with her, because, you know, if it takes, you know, five gallons to flush a toilet, I'm a little bit, you know, and obviously, we can install, you know, low flush and all that, but I'm a little bit concerned that we, we get that figure to be, you know, realistic and the highest figure that it can be consistent with the facilities that we have there. So that will be also one of the things I'll be discussing with her.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right.
Do you want to sign that letter? I can scan it and send it to you, just send it back to her.
Yes, I'll sign it tonight. You can scan it. I'll send it to her, and we'll be good. I'd also suggest that as soon as I hear back from her, I'll probably want to schedule a meeting during the day with Keith, the building inspector, Bill Brookings, to talk about implementation of that. I think if she accepts the timeline that I had there, that, you know, we're fine, you know, to have that meeting as soon as I get the response, and I know that, you know, we've nailed this, this thing down, I can do that independently with those people, or as the time advances, we can do it at a posted Selectmen's meeting and talk about it. But as soon as, you know, we nail it down with Marielle, I think we need to get the interested parties in a meeting, look at that timeline, which I think is a reasonable one, and, you know, be sure, you know, assign tasks and be sure we're, you know, we're equipped to, to meet it.
Yep.
And lastly, I was wondering if we needed to consider adding something further to the library budget between the 20, beyond the $25,000...
That they're asking for?
That they're asking for, for the well.
Right.
One, to cover the ongoing testing, which will be an expense. And I mean, we could also pick that up in municipal building, but there will be an ongoing cost for that.
Right. Do we know what that cost is?
I don't know sitting here, but I think, you know, if I talk to a couple of people during the next week, I could get a, you know, a pretty solid estimate of what this is, something is done regularly.
Yep.
And I do know...
I was going to say, I do think that makes sense to put it under municipal building.
And there's a, there's, yeah, I think you're probably right. And there's a company, I don't know who, I don't know who, we actually...
Rhode Island Analytics does this building.
Who does it here?
Tom Steele.
Tom Steele?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we need to look at that. If Tom Steele is uncomfortable with some of the second and third level testing, there is a firm in Bolton, I believe it's called Small Water Supplies, that does the testing for First Parish Church, you know, and does second and third level testing. So we, you know, but I think as soon as we nail down that ACL, we need to have an organizational meeting, and we really need to set a compliance, an annual compliance plan and be sure people know what they have to do. The other budget issue is whether we should get a quick estimate from a septic system installer about the cost of installing a tight tank in the, in the event that that's required, if, you know, because if you look at it, they, within the next fiscal year, it requires we do a Title V test on that septic system and determine, I mean, if it's in failure, then we would have to address that. Frankly, I left that kind of vague in my comments because they didn't deal with it, and so I didn't actually deal with it.
So perhaps that's a next year?
So it may be a next year, but maybe think about it over the next week, and I'll try to get a figure for it. And I may get more response from Marielle Stone, but, you know, I think we have to, this is a real opportunity, but we can't screw it up, because now, you know, it's been on their radar screen since 2005, and they've sort of held back. It's an opportunity to clarify the thing, but, you know, once committed to this, we have to be committed to it, you know?
Yep.
Okay?
Okay.
Just one more comment. If Tom Steele isn't prepared to do that other testing, and he is on staff, right? He's, he works for Keith? Maybe it's worth it to see whether he would be interested in doing the training.
No, those sorts of things, I need, I think, as soon as, again, as soon as we've nailed the thing to the floor with Marielle, these are exactly the sorts of things that we need to talk about.
Yep.
Okay? Yep. Yeah, because it, it only begins when we finalize the ACL. I mean, the point is that then we have to, to really get together and assure, and we'll have to put the package together, and hopefully, we'll be passing that off to a town manager. Anyway. All right?
Yep.
All right. Okay, then, shall we go ahead and to the next item, which is, we're going to try to finalize as much as we can of the ATM at this point? Mary, did we get any further?
Blurb's.
Blurb's?
No.
No, no. Did we get any further changes to the actual ATM?
No, no, not really.
I understood that the Conservation Commission had withdrawn three, so that...
I just put that in there, and this will be the last time it's in there, just to note that that has been removed.
So that's been removed. And that's in this text area?
It is.
Okay. So why don't we just turn the pages?
So you each have a print copy, and Lisa has hers on mine.
Yeah, I'm not going to keep those all to myself. There you go.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And I'm going to sign this and hand it over separately to Mary so that you can scan it. We can. All right. Okay, Article 1, I'll be just, we'll just really go through and check them, okay? Fair enough?
Mm-hmm.
Article 1, no changes. That's standard. Article 2...
Is that the right year?
Hmm?
Is that the right year? Yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
Is this the right year? Is that what that article's for, or is that for...
No, that is the motion. The first seven articles have the motions pre-typed, so at the beginning of the meeting...
Yes.
Yep.
I think, I think her question was, is it for the year 2018?
Or is it for, yeah.
Because...
Annual reports.
It says 2017, and I think it should say 2018. You're right.
That's my question. Could it be for the past year, though?
Yes, but this is, the fiscal year that ends in July is 2018.
Right here.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. That's what I'm asking.
Well, it's not saying fiscal.
No, you're accepting the reports for 2017. The calendar year just ended. That's what the annual town report is.
Okay.
We do our annual town reports on a calendar year basis.
Fair enough. All right, so we're good?
So, okay.
Article 3 is standard, and that should be no problem.
Okay. Article 4 is the revolving funds?
Okay. I think we should leave the permitting software where it is, and if indeed it passes, again, we can determine administratively not to fund that because it's, okay?
Yep. We won't know about the grant.
Yeah, because this is the revolving fund. It's not the fee, you know, that, which is set by us. This is the fiscal treatment of it. So I would say we leave that, and it may become just vestigial. Okay?
Yep.
All right.
So that was four you were looking at, right?
Yep. Yeah, so through four, we're good.
Four sets the maximum amount, and then five is, I don't know if we still need to keep doing that, but June had the DOI required her to do two separate articles last year, and I'm not sure if that continues. One setting the maximum amounts, and the other one authorizing putting funds into those accounts?
I think that's correct.
I think it is, too, but I left it.
So I think we should leave that, but I'll, I'm going to try to meet with June on Wednesday as well, and I'll confirm. Okay?
Yeah. Though it does say, "I move to amend the general bylaws." I believe that one.
Yeah, but I thought, pretty sure, last year, she said that this needed to continue.
So we make a motion to amend the bylaws every year?
No, that's not correct. Yeah, you would have to change it, but some, somehow, it still needed to be two, I thought, but...
Let me, you know what? On five, let me talk to June, period. Okay?
Yep.
Yep.
And it may be, it may be that that Article 5 should be an authorization for funding as opposed to this.
Creation.
That's a good point. Okay?
The Dutch Elm one.
Yep.
It's in there every year.
Yep.
Okay.
This was the one that the school committee asked to...
They asked, but it was last year already part of the motion. I'm not sure...
I'm sorry, what are we talking about?
On number seven, they just wanted to make sure that that wasn't a standalone.
I'm still on six.
Oh.
Which I think is fine. Whenever I, I see this article, which is right up there with serving ice cream on awards day in terms of James Thurber, the American humorist, wrote in one of his essays that he had an uncle who was Dutch, who was the only person to have died of the Dutch Elm Light. So, anyway, I don't think anybody's died of that in Berlin that I know of. Anyway, we'll leave Article 6 as it is. Article 7.
Yeah.
And go ahead, sorry.
They just wanted to make sure that was part of the group, school committee wanted to make sure it was just part of the group of motions that are all raised at the same time as printed in the...
And it is.
Yeah, so it is.
Okay.
And that's, that's the end of the move, articles moved as a block.
Yeah, and the more I look at it, the more I think Article 5 has to change.
Yep.
Yep.
I didn't tinker with it. It was, that's what it was.
No, I think, no, I think we do, we do need to change that. So which ones are we doing as a block?
One through seven. That's why the motions are already, they go into the printed one every year.
Say that these...
So Barry can say, "We're going to move Articles 1 through 7 as printed in your annual town report."
Okay. So each of these...
I tailored it to little, those aren't the blurbs, those are the actual motions.
Okay. So the motion, then, that's made on the town meeting floor...
I move to, yeah, accept, motion to accept Articles 1 through 7 as written in the printed warrant. I think I'm saying that right. That's what Barry would usually say.
And we have put these motions in before?
For years, years and years.
Okay. So then the motion on the floor is to make the motions that are included in the warrant.
I'm looking right at it.
Sorry.
That's the proceedings.
Good?
Yeah.
That's good?
Sorry.
Got it? Eight is fine. Nine is fine. Ten is fine. Eleven is fine. Twelve is fine. Are we expecting, this is the next one, it's the school.
Mm-hmm.
Are we expecting that at ATM? They'll have that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
They put it in.
Okay.
They didn't put in exactly...
I know they put in, I know they put in the article, but we're actually expecting to have an amended regional agreement by that time?
Mm...
Hmm, that's what they're saying.
Okay.
Uh, it's been, I think it's been two weeks. I'll ask them again if their attorney has given them that language.
Yeah, they knew of tonight's date, but that was just to order them? That wasn't to get the final language?
Yeah, no, we never gave some of these placeholder people a firm deadline on how long they can have a placeholder. The perpetual problem, every year is, um...
Yeah, and I'm not sure when the next meeting is even.
Well, I mean, I do think that article is, uh... The only thing that I would suggest is that we add to this some clause indicating what that amendment describes. In other words, combining...
Like a blurb, or are you talking about the...
No, I'm not talking about a blurb. I'm, I'm, although, you know, a blurb might serve this purpose, what I'm talking about is saying the, you know, amendments affecting the combination of the, the three school systems.
Districts.
Yeah, the three school districts. That's just as simple as that.
Do we wanna wait until we see what they come back with, or...
What I would like to do in, in this preliminary draft...
Okay.
Is to add, after amended Berlin-Boylston Regional School, Regional Agreement, affecting...
Oh, okay.
The unification...
So specify.
Of the three existing school districts as include, as enclosed. Now, they could come back with something that was different from that, but I'd like to at least modify the, the placeholder to say that, because that's the whole, you know, that's the whole point of it, and as it stands, doesn't tell you anything.
Right.
Okay?
Yep.
Um, I would suggest that that could be Article Thirteen, because I think we would like to do the, the school stuff. You know, as, as early as possible.
Mm-hmm. Julie Lee is working on babysitters, too, so...
Okay. I would also suggest that we move the, um...
Playground and all the...
Playground to Article Fourteen, so it was right after that.
Okay.
So switch them?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's not switched, it, it, there isn't a number here, but I would suggest putting Article Fourteen for that one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
They have others, the school has other, um, articles further on in the warrant. Do you wanna put them, all the school things up front?
I'm inclined in that direction.
Yeah?
We're keeping the mitigation things together and then put the school, the rest of...
No, I wanna keep the school things, that, that's, I think is more important.
Page ten.
Okay, hang on. Wait a minute, let's, let's, uh, on the playground.
I'm gonna have to make changes.
Okay. What I would suggest is this, that the fifty thousand that's coming from the Highland, Highland Commas Cultural Mitigation Fund
Mm-hmm.
Should be to be expended by the selectmen.
Right.
Because keep in mind, that is a gift account, that by law is to be spent by the Board of Selectmen. We have agreed to be guided by various votes, et cetera, in doing that, okay? And that, um, the sixty thousand, uh, I think I'm okay, but that being spent by the school committee, because they're doing that as part of their sort of budget and capital.
Right.
Okay? So we'll bifurcate that in the first fifty thousand, that first fifty thousand by us, and the other sixty thousand by them. And as you note, they've, they've already, they being the school committee, have already submitted a capital...
Right.
Request. Okay?
Yep.
Is that fair enough?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
The small little blurb at the bottom of that page should go with the wellness trail.
Yeah, those are...
No, these, these are, these are earlier suggestions.
Right.
So I don't, I think we can, uh...
They can be deleted.
But they can be deleted.
I'm gonna strike them for the next draft.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't have blurbs...
And, and...
...as yet.
Okay, so, all right, so now let's go to the other school committee ones and order them, all right?
Page ten.
And they are, which numbers then?
They don't have numbers, but they're on page ten halfway down the page.
Looks like they're at the bottom of page ten, four articles.
Okay.
Right after the Shrumkin Conservation stuff, which I'm gonna strike out of the next...
Right.
It's kinda hard to read, huh?
Well, it's technically there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's just in the order they gave them, I didn't give them any order.
So let's make those fifteen...
Right in order.
Sixteen, seventeen. Oh, and, and, uh, the bottom one is already incorporated in fourteen.
Right.
Okay?
So strike eight, that's not eighteen, that's struck, okay.
Yep. Okay? So... Yep, so that gets all of those together. There's maybe more from that, right?
Right. Then you wanna go back to the wellness trail, or... Does Recreation only have one article?
Yes, Wellness Trail.
Okay.
They are affected by CPA also. I don't know where you want to put that, but they, they are also affected by that.
That does passive recre- is it active recreation?
Hmm?
CPA is for...
CPA gets part of the money...
Does include active recreation, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Just bear with me for a moment. Yes, I guess I don't mind doing the Wellness Trail right after the, the school committee, because I hope there's a lot of, uh, common constituency and, uh, and relevance, and then I think we can go to... Then my suggestion is that we go to, um, the articles that deal with housekeeping for various departments. Is that fair enough? We'll, I mean, we'll go through that, but...
Well, actually, it would be helpful then for these people on the Recreation Committee have kids and...
Yeah.
Then, in there being babysat or something, looking on home, I suppose. So the Wellness Trail is gonna be eighteen?
Yes, what was the last one on the, um, yes, eighteen?
Do you want that spending by the selectmen?
Yes, because that's, all we're talking about there is the expenditure from, oh, hang on. Yes, all of that should be expended by the selectmen. Yeah, I think that's fine. Okay. All right, so as I'm looking at this, we have, um, one group of articles which are sort of, uh, one-time, you know, occasion for this year, so let's put those down for a moment. That's, uh, ten thousand dollars for permitting software. Because I'm, at this point, I'm a little bit at sea as to how we organize the rest of it. Uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for well. Okay? We have, um... Fire, if you will, code articles. I'm just sort of generally classifying them as that. And then it seems to me we have, uh, public safety capital sort of expenditures, okay?
You mean the fire?
Am I writing this down in an order you just...
No, 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 I'm just trying, what I'm just trying to do is...
Categorize.
Is categorize them so that we can figure out how we wanna juggle them around, and apologies for sort of thinking out loud here.
The planning stuff, too.
Yeah, so we have, yes, and planning, of course, is in there, but, so we have public safety, capital, uh, and that is one, ambulance. Two, pumper tanker. Three, UTV trailer, et cetera. Four design and engineering. Second floor, public safety building, okay? Five, minor equipment. And then I thought we had one police one, didn't we?
Two.
Two.
Top of page eleven.
Top of page eleven, 'cause I wanna, I think I wanna put those, the, those in the same.
And then highway.
Yep, yeah, we'll get to that, yep, yep. All right. And then we have police. New cruiser, two microwave radio, okay? So, um, we basically have seven articles for public safety, and I think we should group those all together. I would, I would like to do the two police ones first, because I think those will go by pretty easily, and, uh, how do people feel about that?
Yeah.
Okay? All right, so, Mary, where were we in terms...
Eighteen was the Wellness Trail.
Eighteen is the Wellness Trail, so let's do, um, nineteen for the, and I'm writing these things down, and I can give this to you, too, so you have a check, but I, I would do, uh, the police cruiser as nineteen, and the microwave as twenty. Everybody okay with this?
Yeah, I'm just trying to find it.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm trying to say the thing, that's why I added that.
Nineteen and twenty?
Nineteen and twenty, so we'll do the, the police first. Okay? And then I would suggest that we do, uh, the ambulance as twenty-one. The pumper tanker as twenty-two. The UTV trailer as twenty-three. The design, actually, I would like to do the minor equipment as, um, twenty-four. And then I would like to do the engineering, 'cause I think that, you know, I'd, I'd like to get the things that are more housekeeping out of the way first. I would do the engineering, et cetera, on the fourth, on the second floor.
So you've got twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five.
Twenty-five there, yep. And then, um, twenty-four is, um, the, the minor equipment purchase on the next page.
Oh, I'm gonna...
Okay, yep. The idea being, you know, let's get the police out of the way, let's get the housekeeping, fire, rescue out of the way, and let's do that design engineering as the last, and the capital on public safety, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so the design and engineering was twenty-four, right? Yep.
Yes. Okay?
The design and engineering was twenty-five, 'cause the minor fire equipment is twenty-four.
Oh, minor fire equipment.
Yeah, twenty-five, yes, okay? Yes, sorry, twenty-four is the minor, and...
Mary, do you wanna go back to the, uh, the bigger article for the fire? Or take that for later?
No, we're, we're getting there.
Okay.
We're getting there. I'm inclined... What I'm inclined to do then, and I'm, I'm open to suggestion, is, um, the permitting s... I think in the next block, I'd love to do the permitting software and the well, which are sort of capital expenditures, maybe?
It's not permitting software, though.
Oh, okay.
Stop calling it that, 'cause that's something different.
All right, I thought, I...
The Jills or the assessors?
That's the assessors, and the assessors is not permitting.
Right.
Okay, assessors?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, whatever, I mean, that, that article, okay?
The software.
I just don't wanna confuse.
No, that's fine, yes, thank you, I forget we're on camera, and we could confuse other people, yes. Um, so we have that, and then we have, uh, Energy Committee, and I'd like to do those two perhaps in the next block.
Okay. So the software for the assessors is what number?
Well, what I'm, what I'm suggesting right now is that we look at those, and are there two for the Energy Committee?
There are two for the Energy Committee.
Yeah. I don't have a real, I don't have, I mean, I would like to do those as the next block, but however we wanna do those in an order, I don't have strong feelings.
I don't either.
But not highway?
We're getting there.
One of them probably promotes more discussion than the other, which one? Do you want the one with more discussion first or less?
Which one do you think is gonna promote?
I think the LED streetlights will promote more discussion than the...
All right, then let's get, um, let's get the assessors, let's get the software and the well in next. And you're right, let's think about whether, what does the highway require, requests?
Paving the parking lot, a truck, and, uh, page eleven. Hundred eighty thousand for a dump truck, seventy thousand for a rooftop.
All right, I'll tell you what. You're right, let's do the highway right after public safety, 'cause that's what people are used to. Okay? So that would pick up...
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yep.
Am I reading order?
Yep, twenty-six. Twenty-seven and twenty-eight. And then, um... Then I would suggest we do the assessor software, the well, and then the, the two, energy, okay? We good for that?
Yep.
All right.
What page is the energy on?
If you ended with twenty-eight for... If you ended with twenty-eight for highway, you want to go to the assessors for twenty-nine, right?
Yep, and the well for thirty.
Top of page five is going to be uh, twenty-nine.
All right, here it is. So, energy is thirty-one and thirty-two. You think that's the correct order?
Yep.
Okay?
Okay.
And you're going to add to the library, I'll top the twenty-five thousand, so we should mark, note that.
You should note that that may be subject, I mean, for this next draft, you should note that we may have some additions to that. But just put that sort of in brackets.
Is that for the water testing?
Yeah, whether we need to add something for the water, uh, no, no, no.
Maintenance? Nope? Okay.
Whether we need to put in anything for a tight tank.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Because again, the ACO contemplates, you know, performance through the end of the year, which is only going to be halfway through the next fiscal year, so that's why I want to.
Yep.
Right now, there isn't a deadline, but I just, you know, when I talk to Mary Al, she may.
We probably want to possibly look at building maintenance, then again, at some point, after we get more,
Uh, town building expenses in terms of the,
Right.
The testing.
Yes.
Right. Which, you know, we should basically do this times two, you know? Anyway, okay?
Okay.
But that, that's not a warrant, that's just a budget item.
Right.
Yep. Okay, all right, so.
Streetlights is thirty-one, and uh, municipal aggregation adder is thirty-two.
Yes.
Okay.
Ah, okay. Can we do right after highway? And I'm, I'm sorry to,
That's okay.
Can we do right after highway? Um, the fifteen thousand dollars for repaving the driveways, because I think that will make sense to people. Sorry, I mean, there's a bunch of stuff on here that,
Twenty-eight point five for now?
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine, but let's, yeah, let's put that in there. I think that makes sense.
What page are we on?
Well, that's on thirteen of fifteen.
Okay.
And that's fifteen thousand to repave driveways in the South Cemetery. But I think, again,
Yeah.
That makes sense. Right after highway. I think, now, working sort of back from the end, if you will, um, I think what we want last, oh, sorry, we have the thirty-five thousand for building officials permitting software. So that should be moved up.
Right after the assessor software?
Right after the assessor software, yeah. Okay?
And that's the one that we're working on the grant for, so.
Yes, I get it.
Yeah. That's why I was,
So it would be twenty-nine and a half, let's say, just for now.
And um, yeah, right now, now we're into the sort of really, you know, mixed nuts at the end, you know? That, anyway. Our current bylaw allows us to write off uh, ambulance receipts.
Anything, actually, even a claim against the town or any,
From one thousand, and raising it to five thousand. Where to put that? I would almost be inclined to put that, like, well, I have two thoughts. One is, right af, right after the, the sort of housekeeping ones that we do, you know, one through six or one through seven. Or right at the beginning of the sort of financial articles at the end, which talk about stabilization, et cetera. And I, you know, I mean, those would be, to me, the two logical places to put it. Anybody have any feelings about?
I think financial.
Okay, so, so, okay. All right, that's fine, so. All right. All right, so um, we will move that to the end. We've taken care of the thirty-five thousand, we're going to move that up. We've taken care of various. And then, and then, again, working back, because I'm going to leave two important things to say, okay, we have this framework, where do we want to drop it in, okay? Which is the CPA. We have a number of financial articles at the end, we just decided that we would do the one thousand to five thousand as one of those, okay? And then we have some closeout articles, and I would suggest that those should be the next of the sort of financial stuff at the end. And then I think the next should be transferring funds to and from stabilization.
Are we numbering?
What I'm doing is starting from the back, okay? Because I'm trying to work, you know, okay, so.
Give me a look, I'm like, oh my god, should I be numbering?
No, no, what, here's, here's what I'm,
Why is he's numbering them?
Here's what I'm saying, is the, there's a block at the end, okay? And the order,
Financials, yep.
The order should be,
Usually bylaws go at the end. Doesn't matter.
As I say, I'm working from the end,
Got it.
To try to, and then we're going to fill in the last bits that are in the middle, okay? I, I'm just trying to, you know, sort of clear the,
No problem. Keep going.
Clear the decks, okay? All right, so.
Where the woman at the end of the table?
Because I do think when we get to that gap in the middle, there, there are a few things that we need to sort of discuss about, how we order them and where they drop in. Okay, so, one is the, you know, raising of selectmen's waiver claims, okay? That's,
Yep.
All right. Two, closeouts of outstanding articles. transfer of funds to and from stabilization, okay? All right.
Those stay in the order they're in.
And I think those can, those, those can be in that order. All right? So, then that leaves us with the Community Preservation Act, and the Prop two and a half override.
Yep.
Underride.
Underride, yeah. No overrides. No pitchforks.
The, um, yes. The underride, it will be the mother of the override, so that's why I made that mistake. Okay, so we have those, those two. I think we've covered everything else.
Town Management Study Committee.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and that sort of falls into your nut bucket, so.
Hmm?
Your bucket of tasks.
Yeah, yeah, and town management, yes, you're right. All right, so, I think we have everything except for those. So those are three big items.
Which three now?
The three are the Town Management Study Article, the Community Preservation Act, and the Prop two and a half, underride.
I don't think that, I think the town management might go quicker than we think.
Because you're still not actually saying,
You're not actually,
You're doing anything, you're just giving permission to keep pursuing.
They just want to support, right.
Now, the other possibility here is to have Mary type up what we've done, you know, in terms of ordering, and for us to think about these big three and see how we want to do it, and just decide on the placement of these big three next week.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's fine.
I mean, because it's, to me, you know, at this point, I'm,
Yeah, I mean, we're still waiting for language and all kinds of stuff, so it's not like we have to do it tonight.
Right.
So,
But this is due to Barry?
It's not Barry anymore.
It's the, well, it's,
It's the uh,
Annual Town Report.
Yes.
Committee.
I'm just, yeah, gotcha. Is there a date by which these need to be?
There isn't actually a date that I have yet.
Okay.
My, my feeling is, if we get beyond mid-March, it's going to be, it's going to make it tougher people, right?
Well, it has to go to council.
To go to council.
Right. So what I say is, if we get beyond mid-March, we're in trouble.
Yeah.
Keeping in mind, too, it's a moving thing, and if there are blocks of the, of the report that can be done.
Yep.
Also needs to go to the FinCon.
They're working on that.
They, it can be done, so.
It goes to the FinCon for recommendations on the financial matters.
Yeah, no, no, I, I get it. And I would say that if we give them this, with those three at this point reserved in terms of where we're going to place them, that that gives everybody actionable information. And we can think about it for the next week, because I got to say, I almost think, I wish I had another meeting just to do those three. You know, I mean, it's, it's uh, those are big.
Yeah.
And we already have a long meeting. You know?
Right.
Yeah.
You can schedule a second night so that people know when to attend versus,
Well, it's almost something to think about, you know? So could, may, may I suggest we think of, because, you know, I think what we've done now is a pretty logical order for what we've done, which is already an ambitious meeting.
Yeah.
And let's think about where we put those three? That make sense?
Yeah.
Because I, I'd like to sort of now, you know, see it when the things are sort of in order, and give some thought to that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, do you want to just put those three somewhere in the middle, and then we'll find it?
No, I would say just put those at the end as TBD.
All right.
You know, TBD where, where we're going to drop them in.
Okay.
Because, yes, there is a part of me that wants to schedule a second night annual town meeting right from the beginning and not fool ourselves.
Can you, I mean, can you do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yeah, you can schedule it, or you can just,
Yeah, I mean, if you,
Continue.
If you, if you post it and say, that's what you're going to do.
Because it seems like it would make it easier for parents if they knew one way or the other,
It might, it, it might be.
And they get arranged sitters, and they get to do these things.
So let's talk, okay, so let's look into that and think about that between now and next Monday.
Okay.
But I think in the meantime, we've ordered the rest of these, and we can get an order out.
Even if you can't technically do that to the annual town meeting, there is still a special,
You know what? I don't want to debate alternate realities. I'm pretty confident we can. We'll check it before next week, and then we'll make that decision. Okay? All right.
Are you ordering the rest of it tonight or not tonight?
I would say, yes, order the rest of it, what we have done, order it in the order that we've given.
The only one you didn't do is planning, which you,
Oh, yes, sorry.
The fire, um,
Yeah, the fire.
Yes, sorry. What we should do is put the fire and the planning in right before that last block of financial, yes, thank you, I had set those aside, forgot to pick them up. So let's put those in right before that. So let's order that as it is, and then at the very end, say TBD, and have those last three. And let's, uh, let's check that out and see what we can do.
All right.
But this is, you know, this is, and then, I actually blame you, because before you were on the board, they weren't these more, so. Right? Should we blame her?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough.
I don't think that's fair.
Can we take a vote on that?
All this stuff is put in the works before I ever got an official.
Oh, man. Okay?
So then, we'll get a draft at some point from Mary, and,
I could do this tonight.
Yeah, well, or,
No worry, sometime before Monday.
And um, I'm going to be in the town hall on Wednesday, and we could also have a meeting on uh, Thursday morning, so if you're, you're putting things together, if that's helpful, you can set some things aside, and I could swing by on Wednesday morning, if you like. Okay?
Yes.
Because I think, you don't have to do it tonight, even if we get it Wednesday, that's plenty of time for us to look at it in between.
Just copy and pasting, it's not that big a deal.
Yeah. All righty.
Eloise stays at the end.
Yes, Eloise, ah, yes, Eloise stays at the end, yes.
Poor Eloise.
Other updates, I believe I forwarded to everybody the uh, emails from National Grid that indicated that um, they are finally going to have a work crew here supposedly, this week sometime, to uh, do that, so I think we're moving along on that.
Okay.
We'll see if they show up about uh, and I'll tell you, I sent that stuff to the guy last, you know, the week before, and said, if you have any questions, then please let us know what's happening. I didn't hear anything from him. The electrical contractor wrote to him to say, what's happening? And in response to the electrical contractor, he said it was going to be this week. So I'm like, come on, I sent you this, this is the thing you were looking for, after you gave me two wrong addresses on the wrong street, in terms of what we're supposed to, you know, follow up, and you're scheduling the stuff, and you, you didn't tell me, you know, so, but, we found out indirectly because the electrical contractor got, thank you, National Grid.
You can always ask George, too.
No, I talked to George, I talked, I actually talked to George last week, too. And told George where we were. And then it was like a day or so later that I saw that from the electrical contractor. But it's like, come on, you know?
Oh, I know.
We sent it, I asked you to,
I think it's National Grid.
As I say, thank you. So anyway, that, I think, is finally,
Yeah.
On the rails. Any other matters to come before the board?
Um, I, I believe I mentioned in an email with the minutes from the highway barn meeting, that they, I believe they have electricity.
Cool.
Which would be nice, so maybe,
So they got their poll in?
Um, they must have gotten the poll in, got the electric hooked up into the building. That's, I just got a, a text from Keith saying, we have power. We'll have our meeting Wednesday, and I'll be able to see this for myself.
Cool.
So, there's hope, there's hope. So, um, I think that's it.
And, and the Shoba meets Wednesday?
And the Shoba meets Wednesday.
And we may have some budget info.
Yes, and they did post it.
Oh, good.
In kind of a timely manner.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary, for posting it here.
Um, I just, I was at Conservation on Wednesday, and um, they have some concerns about the speed at which their current attorney is getting things back. I think you probably saw those things going by. They do have an alternate name, um, perhaps, for going forward, still with KP, that, that Sudbury Valley trustees has had better luck with.
Another firm?
No, it's the same firm,
Oh.
But it's a different attorney.
Okay.
And they can't do anything with um, the stuff that's ongoing, obviously, because,
What I would suggest on that score then is um, it's probably a good thing, anyway. As we're in the budget process and everything, I would suggest that uh, maybe we arrange sometime in late March or early April, a conference call with Joel and Copeland and Paige, and talk about service issues and so on. And invite users, I mean, and let's, let's talk to the users first. to the users first to see what's going to come out, but maybe invite some users to talk about it and have a feedback session, you know, because I think a lot could be accomplished if we spent half an hour, forty-five minutes with them talking about service issues over the year, okay?
Yeah, agreed.
Yep.
And, you know, we sort of renew that on a fiscal year basis, so it's a very timely...
It is.
Discussion, okay?
Sounds good.
Excellent.
So, Mary, can you put that, you know, sort of pencil that into something to schedule for, uh...
As an open meeting?
Hmm?
An open meeting, or just one of the board?
Just for now.
Just put it on there.
Post, um...
Pencil it in the calendar.
Conference call, outside council review, and we'll figure out how we're going to organize it.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Late March, early April.
Because I don't, I don't feel like figuring out the open meeting details of that, but I do want it to be on the calendar, so I don't forget that. Okay?
Yeah.
Yep, and then one other thing was just, um, something was brought up about something called Provision fifty-three G, which appears...
I saw that movie.
Okay.
The movie?
It's something where, um...
It's like, you know, Sector Eight or something.
We can, we can approve this Provision fifty-three G, and it allows them to...
Who's them?
Uh, Conservation, we're still on Conservation.
Yeah, okay.
Um, to hire consultants at an applicant's expense, and it sounds like it's just something we need to look at or pass, so I don't know the details about this.
I can look at it, I can look at that, okay?
I would bring to you, so...
Okay. And I presume, yep.
Other one is just town management will have their reports approved after the next meeting, which is, I believe, Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay.
It's the bigger report, so...
Let's see. I think, uh, you saw the emails on, uh, the ambulance injury claim that occurred outside, and I think the chief and we are on board, and I think we'd already sort of decided that that was a, an injury in the course of duty.
Yeah.
So I think we're, we're all good on that.
Were we good on the other ambulance?
No, I haven't, we have to, that, that requires a little more work.
Yeah.
But this one is clearly a situation where it has been our policy that...
Yeah.
We're not going to charge people ambulance, uh, transportation costs if they're injured in the course of doing their duty for the town. Just don't. And that's been our policy, so, that probably should never have gone to the person, anyway, but, uh...
In addition to the chief handling it, though, did you want to communicate back to the...
What I would suggest is this, if we put together a letter to the victim of the accident indicating that in accordance with town policy, we are treating this as an injury, you know, in the course of discharging town duties, and that that, you know, that bill is hereby, you know, waived and released, okay?
Okay.
And I can, I can sign, if, if...
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's just, that doesn't require both, that's just, you know, implementation of policy, and if you draft that, I will sign that when I get in on Wednesday, and get that out.
Yep.
Fair enough?
Yep.
Okay? Let's see, is there anything else?
Reserve on transfer for legal?
Hmm?
June asks if, if you're ready to do perhaps even a, a partial reserve on transfer for legal.
Yeah, let me talk to June when I come in on Wednesday about that, but, yes, we probably will have to. And there was something else that just, that slickered in, oh, yes. I'm, I'm also following up on the subcontractor claim, and I did take a look at the Massachusetts General Law that cited, and I don't think it's particularly relevant, it's just timing for them to make a claim, I don't think that that implicates the town or anything, and we continue, you know, I think we continue to understand that this is going to be between the contractor, the contractor's bondsman, and that person, but I will, I'll try to confirm all of that with town council by Monday. That was the other thing I was trying to remember.
There was a, an email about the playground and the procurement, and who's doing the playground, is it the town, or is it the school?
We had talked about that last week, and my feeling is that because it is on town, as it is on school committee property...
Well, they're saying it's town property, the school committee, but I...
Has authority over it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so my feeling is that the RFP, and we had, we talked about this last week...
No, you and I did, I don't think...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, just so you know.
I did talk to somebody about it who was around this table. Anyway, my, my feeling is this, that they have disposition of that property.
Right.
They should do the RFP.
That was my feeling, too.
Totally. Yeah.
Okay, great.
Absolutely. We're happy to review it. The only, our only involvement, and we just did this with respect to the warrant, is that we're going to spend money in charge of it, but that's the back end, the front end of the RFP, that's their hunt, okay?
I think, I think their finance director maybe hasn't done this before for the district, so...
Oh, I don't know, but he's been trained, he has...
Oh, yes, he's trained, I was just saying...
He may not have done it, yeah.
That with the, you know...
I think our message to them is, yo-yo.
Yep.
You're on your own.
Right.
We're going to pay for it, but you... To the RFP, it's your project, you know, okay?
Exactly.
Do you want to communicate that, or do you want me to?
How do you spell yo-yo, right? Tell them.
Okay, you can do that.
You can simply send them a note saying, we discussed this, and we figured, polite way of saying that is, um, that we discussed this, and while the town is funding a portion of it out of the mitigation, that should not alter the fact that this is a school department project on property that is committed to the school department's management, and accordingly, they should manage the RFP process, okay?
Okay.
All right. I like yo-yo, it's so much shorter, but...
Yo-yo.
All right.
And the next meeting, next Monday?
Yes.
It's supposed to be a, tentatively, at least on our calendar, a meeting with the FinCom. I don't know that that's happening or not.
Okay.
Dave is going to be... Yeah, that's, it's been kicking around on our calendar for a while.
He would call in.
Yeah, he could call in, I, you know, we talked about that, but...
Yeah, I mean, uh, yes, if there's...
That's what he was talking about when he was here, he was talking about, he was trying to move it before...
Yeah, but they had to meet with the school, so we could do that.
Yeah, it didn't work, right.
Yeah, yes, certainly block out some time, and I would say certainly half an hour, if... Okay? Anything else? You always are so good at making that motion.
The other, one more?
Oh.
June was also trying to nail down a July ninth date, which I have, the last thing on our calendar is July ninth, but it's after our open meeting calendar, because we don't set anything past June, depending on who the next person elected is, but June wanted to try to nail down between the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen, because it's around the Fourth of July holiday, to make sure that we're going to have a quorum of both boards to close down, like...
I think you can, I mean, certainly I can be there on the ninth, if I am still a member of the board. Come on.
And, and, you, you...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's an election in between, that's why I said that.
I know.
Yeah.
I know.
It's a joke.
It isn't a joke, it's true.
Just network, just tie FinCom and June together so that she doesn't have an anxiety attack, that there's not enough people around to...
Tell her, it's on our radar screen, and let's be sure...
Chris and I will still be here, so...
Yeah, and, yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
You know, if it's on my calendar, I make every effort to be there.